In three, one.
Hi, welcome to The Freeman Conversations and to Power Women, our way of paying tribute to women who are not afraid to make a difference. I'm Jobert Ocau, the online editor of The Freeman, and joining me today live here in the studio are Cebu City Councilors Margot Osmania, Margarita Margot Osmania, and Mary Ann De La Santos. Thank you very much both for saying yes to our invitation. Happy Women's Month!
Thank you.
Consider Margot and Consider Mary Ann. Thank you very much. Councilor Margot is the chairperson of the Cebu City Council's Committee on Women and Family Affairs, and Councilor Mary Ann De La Santos is her co-chair in that committee. Before you became city councilor, certainly you were no stranger to politics and public service. I remember when I was still covering...
Many, many years ago?
Yeah, when I was still covering the city government. My Margot was not yet in City Hall, but you're already very active in city affairs. You were very active with children?
Yes.
Operation Second Chance?
Not only that, in Parihan, I was always active with children because from the very start of my husband's political life, that was way, when you were in grade school maybe, eventually. That was something he had asked me to do. Remember, I had no exposure to politics because we had come from the States and, you know, and he ran for mayor and won. And he told me very, very directly and explicitly, "Margot, there are going to be many projects that you will be asked to maybe lead or to be part of. Please, just work with the children." He was the one who asked me to work with the children. So that was way back in nineteen... thirty years ago. Thirty years ago. So that was really how it all started. And I'm very lucky and grateful and blessed that, you know, many people, especially at my age, they think back and they go, "What did I do? Or what can I do?" You know, "I would like to give back to society what it has blessed me with, what life has given me." I didn't have to look.
Do you remember what your first...
It's a children, huh?
Your first initiatives when you came over and started to work?
First, I had to find out, I had to find out what this was all about. I mean, I wasn't an expert, I'm still not an expert, but I did have to find out who are the people who are already doing that. And again, I was fortunate to discover that there was already a Cebu City Task Force on Street Children. Many people think that I founded that. I did not. I asked if I could join them. And I did join them because I said, "I have to listen." How can I do anything if I don't know what to do?
Correct.
So the only way to learn how to do anything is to listen and to accept that you don't know. There's nothing wrong with not knowing, right?
Humility.
Yeah, it's also reality. And so that's how I got involved. And then they were the ones who first who told me, "What we need is a drop-in center." That's how Parihan came to be. And then after that, as we went on, we discovered that, well, it was again a reality that the minor offenders were mixed with adults.
Correct, yeah.
Remember in the old, in the jail? And that was the horrible situation where the children would come in for minor offenses and when they'd leave, they were already, they had doctorates in criminology, you know?
I remember going with you when you did that, a very special, yes, Operation Second Chance before.
No, but it was still in the old jail in BBR. See, it was in Apas, you know? And then, so we, then, we have to build a new, a separate detention center. That was, that is now Operation Second Chance. So it's been more than ten years, fifteen years, I can't remember anymore. And then also Community Stalls, which was then, which started with a little hut within what is now Robinsons Galleria, you know?
North Reclamation.
North Reclamation. And then they had better buildings, but then again, they needed, it was sold. So, again, we had to build the facilities for them, so they are now in Dulo Fatiwa. So these are the, but these are just physical manifestations of what we're doing. I would not, I don't want to go into how many buildings. That's not important. It's how many lives you've been able to help, you know?
Correct, correct. Also about sixteen, seventeen years ago, I was covering city government, Councilor De La Santos was still the barangay captain of Lahoon.
Yeah.
And perhaps one of the most popular barangay captains at that point. I was relating the news to the city and I was already hearing about your name.
Actually, the connection and the entry of Councilor Margot is because she's the wife of the mayor. While mine is totally different. I started in the basic political unit, which is the barangayan. I started as a barangay councillor in 1994. My stint in the barangay is like over eighteen years.
Yes.
And then I ran for barangay captain in 1997. Until such time, I won in 2013 as a councillor, the CEO of Cebu. But that's true, I made a name in Lahoon, you know? As you said, I hope it's, Mary Ann became synonymous with Lahoon.
Yes, it did. I know that.
What made you say yes to run for barangay council?
Well, I would call it destiny. Because I came from a big family of eight, you know? And I'm the youngest among the eight children. Most of my siblings are in the medical field. So, most of them are out of the country, so the old one left. So, I tried, I don't know, it just came, fell into my lap. Somebody asked my father to help a certain person to run for barangay captain and all of a sudden asked me to be, to run as one of his councillor. And the rest is history.
For eighteen years, right, in the barangay? How many terms were these?
There were extensions.
Yeah.
So practically, three terms. And there was like during the time of Ramos, it was extended to five years. So practically eighteen years.
What made you stay that long in serving Lahoon?
Actually, it's my passion. It's my passion to serve. And no regrets, you know? If I have to start it all over again with my political career, I will start from the basic political unit.
You'll never be wrong.
You can, you have to start into the grassroots, touching lives and making a difference. And the opportunity to serve where the people whom you are serving doesn't have the opportunity to pay you back.
I see. It's not easy, of course, to be in public service. What do you think are your qualities as a woman that make you effective in what you do?
You know, when you say it's not easy, it's because we're more exposed, you know? So it seems that, it seems that everything we do is for the public. So, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's harder than other people's jobs. We choose what we want to do. And if we stay in it, it's because we choose to stay. To me, if you say it's too hard, then get out. Because if you don't, if you don't, if you don't, if you keep on complaining, you won't be able to do it. So just, then maybe it's not the right thing for you. But the fact that you stay in what you're doing is because...
That's your choice.
It's your choice. So, what makes, what was your question?
What makes you effective as a woman in what you do? What quality of your thing helps you, help you be effective?
As a woman? Maybe a little more sensitive? Sensitive to people and not, 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 I'm not using, not afraid, but not hesitant to show your sensitivity. There are some people who feel that they're, "I can't show it," you know? "Kan lang, but pakitaan ako." You know what I mean?
Yeah, men are generally that. I have to admit, yeah.
I can't, I can't, I can't be emotional about this, even no matter what you feel. But women, I will speak for myself, okay? I have no problems about that. So it's a sensitivity and one to me is that, that, yeah, the quality of having, being sensitive to others. Not sensitive, "Oh, I'm hurt." Because some people are very sensitive, but they're only sensitive about themselves, you know? It's a sensitivity to others.
Thank you, Councilor.
Well, I, for me, it's compassion and the natural instinct of being a woman. It's, I'm not a mother, but it's the maternal instinct of caretaking and protecting, like your family and your children. It's that quality which I believe men are less compassionate than women. So men are less emotional than women. So I saw that.
Because there's also an argument, a counterargument, that women can be too emotional at times, but that actually is something that you think works to your advantage?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, because of the compassion.
Very nice. There you go, man. How would you describe the modern Cebuana or Filipina?
Filipina?
Yes, and Cebuana. In the past, there's always been, we've always been told what to do, when you should get married, when you should have children.
I didn't find that.
Oh, okay. Very interesting.
My generation is way ahead of yours, or even of Councilor Mary Ann's. I could be her mother, actually. But, you know, in my time, you were expected to finish college so that you can get married. I mean, it's like, you know, you got married at twenty-one, twenty-two. I got married, well, we got married, I was thirty-four. That's old.
Other time.
Yes, that was ancient. That's about, you're not even a child bearing thirty-four, you know? And my grandfather was even ready to put me up to pasture, literally. Built me a little house in Tagaita because he thought that, he said, "What's wrong with you, you know? You're not married." He even said, "Don't you have, you have a problem with getting dates?" I said, "I don't think so, Lolo." He said, "Because I have, really," he said, "I have friends who have grandsons and I can arrange." I said, "Oh, it's okay." See, because to them, I was, he said, "How old are you, Napa?" I said, "Thirty." And he, "No, you have no plans?"
Serious time.
But again...
But you did go on dates?
Of course I went on dates!
Was it a conscious effort on your part?
Not to get married. No, it just didn't happen. And again, it's destiny. It's the right person. I am so blessed that, may I know, that I have the life now that I really am living with the right person, with the right family. I have so much to be thankful for and I am blessed and I am grateful. I am contented with what I have and I don't really want anything more. Anything else that comes is like they say, gravy. And whatever I have, the opportunity to share that with others is what I would like to have.
Just to come full circle, how did your family and your parents' grandfather react when you eventually decided to get married?
He was very happy. My both grandparents, grandfathers, both asked if they could, if they could, you know, be the one to take me down the aisle.
Ah, that's sweet.
I think you have to ask my papa. But unfortunately, by, I was going to get married, I had plans already, but it took maybe a year. And before, before they both passed away, by our actual wedding, but they were both very happy. In fact, my paternal grandfather, he was already in the hospital and he said, "You're really getting married?" I said, "Yes, Lolo." Then he said, he told his, you know, his yaya would be with him forever to prepare his suit.
Very sweet.
Yeah, it's sweet. But going back to your question, yeah, we were, maybe some things were expected. Maybe there's the expectations now. There's the realization that women, the world is much bigger now. They have a choice. But these are for the fortunate, not all women have the choice now. And that is what we are blessed with. We have a choice. Like I said before, where we are now is where we choose to be. How many women can say that?
Right.
Right?
Commissioner Mary Ann?
Well, a modern-day woman for me is the transformation of identity and roles that has changed families and societies. For me, nowadays, a modern woman is an accomplisher. Well, as you can see, there are a lot of restricted fields before, but now it became permissive. Example is politics, Philippine Military Academy, and police.
Police.
Different fields. But you can see already, they top in PIA.
Yes.
And then there's already precedent that we have two women president. And the role of example Margaret Thatcher there is very significant. So...
Just a modern day woman?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a transformation of identity and the role that has significantly changed, you know, family and society.
Despite these positive changes in the role of women in the community, the Philippines is still largely a very patriarchal society. How do you, how do you suppose we can make women unafraid, especially those who are, Margot pointed out, are not too fortunate to have your choices?
Well, you just have to speak up. And based on the premise of equality, on a personal note, even if it's a man-dominated world, I don't feel in fear if I was...
Never! I also for those who have, who are not as fortunate as a Councilor Mary Ann and I are, know that we have a choice, that I was saying. Let these women know that they're not alone. That if they speak up, somebody's going to listen. Because what's the point of talking and speaking up and, and, you know, and trying to find out what are really my rights? How come I cannot have them if nobody's listening? And that's where maybe the role, our role can come in. That's where we can really come in.
As public service?
As public service. That we, we have to be responsive to them, to listen and to do something about it. First of all, to teach them, to make them know that they are not alone. Speak up, yes, and we will listen. And let's do something together.
Councilor Mary Ann said earlier that she's never afraid to speak her mind, even in a company of men. I'd like to ask, how is the relationship between the male and female councillors in the Cebu City Council?
Well, maybe I'm in a different position because I'm the oldest, I think. Like, you know, they actually call me ma. These are the ones from, you know, those who be OPK. And I'm very happy when they do that. Because if Mary Ann is the youngest of eight, I'm the eldest of eleven.
Wow!
Yeah, so it was always something that I grew up with because I was really the ate. And my parents always made me, "You're the ate." You know, so you're the one. It's a certain point that only responds, you know? But I had to be, I had to lead them. And make, you know? So when, as going back to you, I don't see any problem. And they don't, they have given us, well, because we won't take it any other way. But if you're, if you're wondering how they treat us because we're female councillors, as to them being male councillors, no difference.
Do you agree? Commissioner Mary Ann?
Well, we're civil, we're cordial.
Yeah.
But most importantly is that they respect us. And if they don't, we demand.
Correct! Right!
How do you do that? How do you make?
Well, respect is earned.
Yeah.
And it comes with character.
Okay.
And when you talk of character, it talks of integrity, it talks of credibility, it talks about your values. But if you display a behavior there that is very demeaning, I don't think so my colleagues will respect me.
Are these the same principles you applied when you were still barangay captain?
Oh, yeah, my, my principles are very well rooted. It started with my basic social institution, which is my family and my school.
Right.
It's very nice for you to bring that up because my next question actually is, you are undoubtedly very strong women, very strong personalities. Where do these values come from, your principles?
My, and I think Councilor Mary Ann also, is our family. If we, again, I was the eldest of eleven. I grew up in a family that had its share of challenges, as I would like. But we always remained close and we still remain close. And that is the root. And now I have my own family, a small family of one husband, of course, one only, you know? And then an only son and a daughter-in-law and takeout the in-law. She's really our daughter.
Yeah.
She is. You know, we are even blessed with that. I mean, and now we have a granddaughter. Who, every grandchild is special, right? But ours is even more special in many ways and is a gift. So what else can we ask for? To me, to me personally, if our family, or if our family life, Tommy's included, of course, if it was not strong and be rooted, then what's the point of all of this? That's why he is the way he is and that's why I am the way I am. Because we know that our very roots are there, it's strong. What if it's the other way around? When there are no problems, they say, even in politics, I know that's impossible, but you know? But when you go home, you know, your family is, you don't have one. That's a no-brainer, right? You're gonna choose. But we are blessed to have one because you're strong because it's inside. You know? So that's what makes us, me, strong. Knowing that I have it there. Knowing that I grew, from the very, from the very moment that I, I could acknowledge my existence, I've never felt, I've always felt that I had a family. Always. Before, now, and I think forevermore, you know?
Commissioner Mary Ann?
Well, the same token, yes, my pride is with me.
Yeah.
And I'm very fortunate and very happy and I owe it to my parents that basically they taught the eight of us basic good manners and right conduct. And that's the very basic values that they taught us at home. Honesty, integrity, credibility. So wherever I go, now that I'm city councillor, first I'm barangay captain and now city councillor, it's always in my mind, in my heart. So that makes me stronger as a person, stronger when confronted with temptations, stronger when confronted with any political foes because I am grounded. So it's a strong family background with rooted principles and convictions, coupled with a strong academic school. I grew up in, you know, Cola Hiyotin Makalada Concepcion. It's Catholic, it's brother sisters. And it's supported with the same good manners and right conduct. So you'll never go wrong if your principle, your basic principle, it's just like studying law or any basic course. If you're rooted, if you're well-versed on the basic principles, it's the basic principles of life. Even if you become president, honesty is the best policy. If you become mayor, city councillor, whatever.
You don't have to think, "Nah, it's part of you." You're not even thinking anymore, but because it's just part of you.
These are the values that you carry wherever you go.
Wherever you go.
And like, my papa always told me this because I was twelve years old, I remember that. And he said, "You know, Margot, everybody is the same. Treat people the same way. It doesn't matter if they're rich, if they're poor." Because my papa was, he could talk to anyone, you know? And he said that. Because he noticed there was, there was one time that I kind of snubbed some people, you know? And he said, he called me and he said, "Eh, halo, everybody's the same." So that is something that I have grown up with since then, that everybody's the same. Some are just more fortunate than others, right?
Reality.
It's reality again. And many times, it's I am who is more fortunate than the person I'm talking to. And that doesn't make that other person less of a person. It's just that, by the grace of God, again. So I think we're completely in sync here, that it is really our family.
That's why we can probably gel in many ways.
Because I'm her mother!
Yeah, really. Can we talk a lot of things, we can share pictures, even the phone?
Does she remind you if you go straight?
No, you can't.
You know, she tells me, you know, it's, we miss our family, the siblings. When I was vacationing, I showed her a picture, "Look at this."
Yeah.
My god, we can relate, you know?
You share the same values?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that is, that is what's important.
I'm only three years part of the OPK. But I saw the, I saw the real Margot. In a way, I heard who Margot Osmania when I was not part of this OPK. But all things that I heard of her, now that I've came to know her in three years, it's, my god, as I said, we can gel.
How does this sharing of values or having these same values help you in your work in the city council?
Then, then it's something that we don't even have to talk about. Like I said, when you share values or when it's something that's automatic in you, you don't have to explain. You don't have to explain it. We know where we're both coming from and it's trust. It's a lot of that also comes into trust. Because if you trust, when you trust somebody, it's because you know that you share the same. You don't have to explain everything, you know, every thought, every comment because you know that you're coming from the same place and you're going towards the same direction. So, of course, there are certain details, but my feeling is this.
If there is an issue, example, there's an issue that we are confronted. You know how I feel about it? She doesn't have to call me to explain about that issue because probably she knows what is my standard issue. The same token, if I have an issue probably that is presented before, I don't have to explain it to her because probably I know that what...
This is what she'll feel?
Yeah, because we have more or less the same, the same principles, something like that.
At this point in time, there are only three councillors in the Cebu City Council, the two of you and Councilor Jose Luis Biscara. Do you think we need more women councillors?
No. I think why not? There's nothing stopping anyone from running, you know? And if I just would go back, it's also respect. Just because I'm older doesn't mean that I'm better. Right? There are many things about Councilor Mary Ann, and you can be honest, that I respect and acknowledge that they're in a better position to discuss about this or to handle this particular issue, project than I am. It doesn't mean that I'm older and maybe to others, she's the wife of the mayor. That doesn't make me better. I just happen to be the wife of... But I got into the council because people voted for me, not because I'm the wife of the mayor. He wasn't the mayor anyway when I, when I got into the council, you know? So, so going back to that, yes, it's also respect. It's a lot of it is respect also. And again, to your, why not other women? Why not?
A scenario would probably be equal distribution as far as gender is concerned. What would the scenario be in the council perhaps?
Well, first of all, the women, I mean, you can't just say, "Okay, we have to have eight women and eight men." It's up to the women also. Go out there and make yourself available. Because you have, you have these traits, you have this experience and you have this desire to serve. And to be, actually, not even serve, but to be, yeah. Sometimes serves, it seems, you were served as, I don't know. Sometimes that word is misused. But to be of help or to be of service, you know, to the whole, to Cebu City in particular, you have something to offer. Go out there and offer it.
Do that, Commissioner Mary Ann?
Well, probably, you have to roar louder.
Louder.
For you to be, there's some, but it depends because there are some who doesn't really have the heart to be in the lifetime.
Or in public service?
Yeah, or in public service. You have to have a strong sense of character. You have to have the perseverance and you have to have the principle and a strong heart.
Patience perhaps?
Yes.
To verkulit mila.
Then also priorities because many women have families, right? So it might come to a point where, "How can I be, how can I serve?" But I have children who are still growing up, you know, and I have to, see? Again, Mary Ann, Councilor Mary Ann has the, has the, she's in that position where she doesn't have to choose. I am in that position where I don't have to choose either. My son is grown up, right? My son is grown up, my husband is better, you know, they service, you know? It's just my granddaughter who... It's just my granddaughter who, who, who I would like to spend a lot more time with. See, but not, again, not all women have that advantage.
So both of you are taking advantage of this opportunity?
Oh yeah.
To be able to bring yourself to public service. Just to give our viewers a glimpse of, you know, a little bit of the background, during the campaign, for example, what was the response of voters to women leaders, those running female, running for office, women running for office?
Well, if I, on a personal note, uh, the two elections, I find it very significant, especially in 2013. I don't know if, uh, there is really the so-called women's blangong vote, because in 2013, I was the only candidate who won.
From the other side?
The administration. So, all the rest are coming from BOPK. And modesty aside, I, I landed number two. So, what made that more significant in the 2016? Because I had a very controversial, uh, political...
Development.
I was invited by, uh, BOPK to join, and, uh, I thought, uh, I thought that everybody was up against me, especially on the other side, they were there to pull me down. And, uh, and to think, it was a struggle for the BOPK party, because Mayor Tommy was the challenger. And we were up to a very big administration then, they had everything. The resources, you know, it's, it's hard to fight in Kumben. So, I got the result, I'm still number two, so I don't know if...
Not bad!
So, uh, the response was, uh, it's overwhelming as far as I'm concerned, and uh, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the women out there who believes in me and who believes in my advocacy, who believes in my integrity and the principle, because my integrity was a sale in that 2016 election, so it did work. So, I'm very happy.
Councillor Maragot is the chairperson of the Committee on Women and Family Affairs, you are her co-chairperson in the city council. How are our efforts to promote women's rights and welfare?
We, our, our women, our women group are very active. Our women and children's group are very active. But I would like, we would like to give credit for it also, it's due. I mean, we can, we can say I'm chair, she's co-chair, but who, who is there in the ground? Who are the ones implementing all of these programs? It is really former councillor Bea Hapsom, who took, who was appointed as the, um, department head of the DSWS, Department of Social Welfare and Services. And she is doing a marvelous job, because she is hands-on. And with this head, I call her Sek, you know, si Peta Agan do to the DSWS. Because she's there, and she can, she can answer you, you know? And, and, uh, she's on top of the activities. So, um, you remember the city also got an award many years ago for our, for being child, for, not only child-friendly, for gender sensitivity and women's programs. And this was given by the, uh, one of the arms of the United Nations. So it was something, it was an international award. So our children, our women's programs have been out there for a very long time. It's the implementation again that is very important. And, uh, we have, you know, there's, there's also one thing that I would like to bring up and maybe ask for help.
Sure.
We have a lack of social workers. Not many are going into social, and into, into that, uh, field, into that field. So we're constantly looking for social workers. Because they're the ones who are there, right? They're the ones who are...
In the field, yeah.
In the field, yeah, in the field. So, I would like, if there's anybody, um, or there, I would like to encourage first people, those to, to see if they, they could be interested in that field. And for those who are already in that field, I would also, we would also like you to know that the city is always looking for social workers.
Why don't we have enough?
There are not enough.
It's not a popular field.
It's not that, yes, and I think there are only two schools here.
STC and...
STC, Papa, and U, uh, USP, I think.
It's not popular, but now it's, you have to be willing to grab.
So what's happening now is that the, the local government units and the NGOs are all grabbing for the social workers, right? Yeah, so competing for the social workers. And it's, they're the ones there, they're the ones who know what to do. And the, the government, again, in the government, it requires, that is required, that you have to be a licensed social worker, because you can say, why don't you just train people to do this and to do that? Because we can't do that, we have to comply.
In the previous interviews we had for Power Women, our guests have always pointed out that education plays an immense role in, uh, helping women find their voice. Do you think, do you agree?
Definitely, absolutely, and that is why, um, Tommy, well, my husband, really, that is, his dream is that every Cebuano will have a college degree. Because that will give you, number one, self-respect, dignity, and the ability to take care of yourself with pride. And then that leaves the local government unit to take care of other things, but to him, education is the most important. That's why these programs are, remember the, uh, the city scholarship program? How many people have benefited from that? And I would like to share a story. During the campaign, I had to go to an area where the only place, the only way to go there was haval-haval, oh my god, I said...
Where was this?
La Mano, I had to go up, and I said, I called up and I said, "Where's the..." "Ma'am, sa ka ka?" "Sa ko pa sa ka?" "Haval-haval." Well, okay, if I have to do it, I'll do it. So I, the haval-haval driver was there, I was hanging on to him, dear guy, and of course, because when I'm very nervous, I'm also very talkative. Because I try to, I know my being nervous, I talky, I said, because we were going up, there's no road, you know? And he's just going higher and higher, and then, you know, then he said, "Duha." I said, "Nya, imo panginabuhay, magkaano ba, haval-haval, saktun ano?" Then he said, "Okay naman ko, ma'am, kahit duluong akong maglalaki, duha." Then he said, "Ma'am, college graduate, city scholar." He was so proud. He said, "Unsaon pala, wala g'yo kumakdamo sa una ba na makakalasya akong mga anak." You know, it makes you want to cry, hindi ba? There's something good happening, and this is it, yes, education.
And we just opened, we just made the public library open 24 hours?
Yes, and we're opening tomorrow, they're opening the Pardo Study Center. Because they would like to have satellites also, so that not everybody, you, not everybody, you don't have to go all the way there. I think the other night, I was told that in 24 hours, there were 2,400 or something.
Suddenly, the public library became very small.
It's finals, and I would like to thank also all the people offering help. People, you know, are offering help. Senator Gordon is, is, was nagging me about the poe, to fix it. And, and others, I say, you know, what do you need, just please, please tell us, we would like to be of help.
Very good news, yes, councillor Mary Ann?
I am a, I am a believer in education, because I am a product of a legacy of education. Uh, my parents, both, if I may say, the only thing they told the eight of us, the only thing I can leave you is not a vase of land, it's not, uh, bank accounts, but choose or pick a course, because the only thing I can leave the eight of you is education. So, uh, I don't know if this is bragging rights as far as we are concerned, because of my parents, the eight of us are all professional. And we excel in our different fields. Our eldest is a nurse, then followed by an accountant, then a doctor, then a nurse, then an engineer, and then it's a nurse, and I am a graduate of law. So, wherever they are now, I would like to take this opportunity to thank them. Because, uh, we have a voice in our different fields, we are independent, we are self-reliant, we learn to, to be giving, we learn to be very kind, especially to the less privileged, because the tool for where we are and who we are now is education.
Very good, yes indeed, yes.
You know, so it's, it's, you cannot underestimate, we, we cannot underestimate the value of education.
Because in the past, there's always the argument, walay na dako is education, walay na dako is kuwela. We always hear that in rural communities, for example?
It's not to get rich, but it's be able to have a life, right? I mean, you don't do things because I want to get rich. I mean, you shouldn't do things because you want to get rich. If you happen to get rich, because you're, because you're, you know, then good for you. But having an education, it doesn't mean that you're going to get rich. How many rich people in Manila have an education, right? Rich, but again, it gives them at least a foot into the door. And what they make out of it is up to them now.
Correct, yeah.
Right? I mean, you, you can go to school forever, but it's, you don't do anything with it.
We do have the Magna Carta for women, we have a law that protects violence against women and children. Do you think we have enough, or do you think implementation of this present laws are enough?
Well, I believe there's so many laws. It's a question of implementation.
Advocacy, awareness, and again, making them know they're not alone. Making them know they're not alone. We don't have to shout, sometimes it's a gentle way is better, sometimes it's more effective, but just tell them you're not alone. And, you know, it's scary when you're alone, diba?
Do you think Cebu City or even the country has made it easy for women these days?
What do you mean easy?
Do you think we now have opportunities, women now have more opportunities?
Yes.
Equality, for example?
It's made easier for women. In fact, not only Cebu City, but the world has opened the gates for opportunities for women.
Yeah, yeah, I think, especially now. And it's so sad that this all came about recently because of, you know, harassment cases. But it brought out the voices of the women and the unity of the women, that they're in this together, diba?
You are not into public service, we all know that, who do you look up to in this area? Service, leadership, uh, women, female idols, women?
Well, uh, I, I look up to, two. One is Margaret Thatcher. That for me is the role that she played there in coordinating with President Ronald Reagan, has ended the Cold War. Second is I look up to Lee Kwan Lee. Well, that is a true visionary leader. And this diversified population in Singapore has, uh, opened to harmony, and it, it brought, uh, economically stable, uh, country in, in Singapore, and it has brought discipline and national pride.
Despite Singapore being a very small country, almost look like Cebu City.
I see, like Cebu City.
Yeah.
Yeah. In my case, I never thought about it, you know, but since you asked me, and I was just thinking a few days ago, what, did all of this, everything happening here? I said, and I was watching, and I said, I think I miss Miriam Defensor Sanjanko.
The late senator, yeah.
You didn't have to like her, but you had to respect her. Sometimes she was, you go, wow, what's that? But she spoke what was in her mind, and she had a brilliant mind, right? I mean, no, no one read that. And she, she just said it the way she said it, the way it was, and sometimes, I, I don't know, the other day I just said, "Sana, she's still around."
Especially now.
Many of us miss her.
Right? And then you realize that only in times like this, when, hm, you know, what if she was there, then you know these things wouldn't be, some of these things would be under control at least. And then I think also watching the documentary on the Rosebells, you know? Um, Theodore Roosevelt and Franklin Roosevelt. And a lot of that, a lot of the, uh, noise on, on the wife, Eleanor Roosevelt. She was not a politician per se, but her role in the, her husband's life, his policies, and how she held strong, she insisted, you know, on her own way, she would do it alone if she had to, and she did it. Then, I said, this is the first time, I thought I really got to be familiar with what she was saying, I said, she is so admirable.
At the risk of being controversial?
Oh, she was very, yeah.
No, for myself, for this interview, at the risk of being controversial, if I may just ask, is Cebu City ready for a female mayor?
What's the difference between a male and a female? Why, what, what, what would make a female, why would Cebu have to be ready? They just want a, they want a good mayor. Female, male?
Well, uh, gender isn't an issue. Female, male isn't an issue, it's a, a character that defines a person. And if they want to get, uh, to vote a good leader, it doesn't matter whether you're male or female. Cebu City is, Cebu City doesn't have to be ready. Cebu City wants a good, uh, mayor, whether you're male or you're female. So it, it may be female, of course. Yeah.
To wrap this up, your message to your fellow women and to the men?
Hello, women and men? Well, may I again go back to, to my own personal situation, where like I said, I have reached the point in my life where, where I, I know I count what I have, not what I don't have. You know, and I am grateful for everything that I have. Grateful, contented, and hoping to have more opportunities to share that, to share what blessings I have. I don't want anything, I don't really crave for anything more than what I already have. And so for my message is that we will, we are now as a public, somebody in public service. You are not alone, the women, as I said earlier. For those who cannot speak the way I speak, because of the blessings I've been given, but for the grace of God, please know that you are not alone. Speak up, we will listen, and we will work on this together. And for the men, you also listen, please. Thank you.
Lucky for you, my, councillor Mary Ann?
I, I take my public image as an opportunity to be a role model, uh, to future leaders as a woman. And, uh, uh, the only way for us, the women, to be heard is to speak up. The, the, the challenge there is if there are other people listening to us. We just cannot speak and speak. We have to capture an audience for, for them to listen to us. But since this is, uh, uh, Women's Month, I hope that I will be forgiven. Because I have this line of thinking all the time, in every Women's Month, which I am telling everyone, that give a woman an opportunity to do a man's job.
That's right, very good.
They will always do it better.
Yes, you are forgiven.
Thank you, thank you. And for all the men out there, uh, do not treat us to be, uh, inferior, because we are not. And do not push us to the wall, because if you do, we're better than you.
And you came from us.
From where?
Councillors Maragot and Mary Ann, thank you very much.
Thank you also.
Thank you very much for being here. It was a very nice opportunity to be...
To get all the Women's Month.
Of course, of course, and again, Happy Women's Month.
Thank you, thank you very much.
To both of you and to everyone watching us right now. This has been Power Women, and our guests today, Cebu City councillors Maragot Asmaya and Mary Ann de Santos. Please watch our upcoming episodes in Power Women as we continue to talk and feature women who are not afraid to make a difference. I am Jobert Oca, online editor of The Freeman, thanks for joining us. Join us again next time here on The Freeman Conversations.